All right, I would like to call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here and I will ask the clerk to do the roll call.
All right, President Raymond. Yeah, she's here. Vice President Taylor. Trustee Calvert.
Yeah, thanks.
I am here. Trustee Simon Holland. Trustee Kelly.
I'm here.
All right. Trustee Minneto. Student trustee Noble. Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. All right, next up is our Pledge of Allegiance and we have a special guest in the crowd today. I'd like to ask Lincoln Kiekeffer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Lincoln. Okay, Agenda Item 1.04 is Action to Adopt the Agenda.
So move.
Motion by trustee Simon Holland and a second by Vice President Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. And we will now move on to the Consent Agenda Item. 2.01 is Approval of Consent Agenda Items 2.02 through 2.17. Any trustees have any questions or... JJ, do we have any public comment on Consent Agenda? All right, then I'll be looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
A motion by trustee Simon Holland, second by Vice President Taylor. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously. 3.01 is Public Comment.
Lincoln Kiekeffer. Welcome, Lincoln.
Hello, I'm Lincoln Kiekeffer and I am here on behalf of Spread the Word Nevada. So, I joined Spread the Word Nevada because when I was younger I had a lot of asthma attacks, still do, and my parents would spend hours upon hours reading to me. It was a great way to escape. So, that's when someone spread the word to me about Spread the Word Nevada. And when I knew as kid mayor, I knew I would partner with Spread the Word Nevada. Their Kids to Kids program, which I'm partnering with, is used to get books into underprivileged kids. How it works is so, underprivileged schools, which I forget, they bring in books once a month for children from kindergarten to 5th grade. Also, they do a program called Books Over Break where they go and read to the kids over summer so they don't forget reading skills. Another one is Breakfast with Books, where each kid goes and gets breakfast at their school and then gets a book along with it. And that's the three programs here in Nevada. And I chose to be Washoe County Kid Mayor to help children who can't afford books. Does anyone have any questions?
Madam President, I know this is not necessarily protocol, but since we have the honor of having the Kid Mayor here, then would it be okay, council, to have permission to deviate?
I think it's fine, sure.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for being here. I know your schedule is very busy and so the fact that you took time to be here really means a lot to us.
Thank you.
I just, I do have a question for you, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. My question is, in how many books do you think per year Spread the Word is able to give out to the underprivileged kids?
Well, depends which area. They do it in Clark County as well as Washoe County. And it usually takes around $25,000 to get the Kids to Kids program into a school in Clark County and $15,000 to get a school here in Reno. And I pledge to raise $30,000 to get Kids to Kids into two more schools here in Reno. So, I'm asking for your help to Spread the Word about Spread the Word Nevada.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Do you have a website or how would you donate?
Well, so how it works is the people actually go into the schools and hand out the books. So, they start out with this bag with five books in kindergarten and each month they get one more book until they graduate 5th grade. Any more questions?
I just have a comment as the interim superintendent. I just have to tell you, Mr. Mayor, that I think that you are probably one of the most authentic people we have ever had to our school board trustee meeting. So, I truly, truly appreciate your help and support for children that may not have the avenue to read. So, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture?
That'd be great.
Sure, of course.
I'll take a quick two-minute recess to take a photo.
He's gonna play his championship bass for me.
Good luck.
Good afternoon, Margaret Martini and Glenn Village. For over three years, we have been talking about the hijacking and storing of our children's data by free education vendors like Kahoot, ClassDojo, Edmodo, and hundreds more. The overuse of screens in our schools and the unintended consequences and the inappropriate and sometimes dangerous online content schools are exposing our children to. It seems like the winds are finally starting to shift on this issue as more parents, teachers, and district employees become educated. The only board member who spent her career as a K-12 teacher, trustee Minneto, Ms. Minneto appears to be the only board member who has the same concerns that we at Protect Nevada Children have. In 2017, Edmodo, one of the district's most widely-used free education vendors, social media platforms, breached our students' data and our students' IDs were likely posted for sale on the dark web. 2018, Edmodo was sold to the Chinese for the student data and student profiles Edmodo had created on our children. 2018, the FBI issued a public service announcement warning parents and school districts about education vendors. Over a year after Edmodo was sold to the Chinese, in 2019, the district finally said teachers can no longer use Edmodo. In 2020, the FBI told us the Chinese are creating massive database on every American. The purchase of Edmodo was a big win for the Chinese. It is likely the Chinese will buy other U.S.-based education vendors. Another education vendor used in this district's schools is Kahoot. In May 2019, an inter-district memo, Washoe County School District stated Kahoot, an overseas company, sells our students' P2 to unknown third parties. In October 2019, Bishop Meno's mother said Kahoot contributed to her son's suicide. Caleb took the three-question test on Kahoot while at school titled "Should I Kill Myself?" The next day, Caleb committed suicide. This is pretty important to note. Starting in July 2020, the district will no longer allow teachers to use Kahoot. What is taking you all so long? That should have happened the very next day. So, Kahoot sells our children's P2 to unknown parties and contains harmful content, but it takes 14 months to remove it from our schools? This is beyond acceptable. It's beyond unacceptable even. Here's the supporting documentation for everything I said above. You can find us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. I've enclosed all of the information. Please add this to the minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Silvera.
My name's Joseph Silvera. I'm a custodian with Washoe County School District. I'm speaking on what I've seen and I'm not speaking on behalf of any other association or anything. But the reason I'm speaking today is to the poor morale of our workforce. And to be blunt, the reason is, is because I don't feel the school district cares about its workers, specifically the ESPs. The reason I say that is because I tried to assist and help another member whose job was disappearing due to loss of grant funding. And I contacted multiple departments, multiple individuals, I even went as far as trying to take advantage of the open-door policy of the superintendent. And across the entire platform, I found more times people would just try to kick the can down the road or use the rules pre-existing in the district so that they wouldn't have to help the individual. And I would be okay with that if the policy of the district wasn't, you know, not the policy, but if the statements from the district wasn't that they cared about working morale, they cared about retention rates, they cared about its workforce. But I get to hear those lines plastered many times across paperwork or listening to these meetings when they're being streamed online. And it really bothers me when I actually go out and I try to see firsthand how that operates. And in the end result is, no one, no one was willing to help this person. No one was willing to lift a finger. Instead, spent more time trying to tell me every rule in the book where they weren't going to help that person. So, I thank you for your time. I'll make this brief because I gotta run back to work at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvera. I know the interim superintendent's here taking some notes and I'm sure she'll be in touch with you so that we can get more information about this.
Alexander Govan.
Hello, my name is Alex Govan. I'm a 5th grade teacher at Agnes Rizley Elementary School, a WA member and a building rep and an active member in Empower Nevada Teachers. Each one of you has heard and read the dire statistics and embarrassing standards our state claims, so I'm not going to speak about that, but speak from my own perspective as a teacher who is under pressure and a district under pressure. My pressure begins each day walking into a classroom that will hold 31 5th graders, which is not uncommon for Rizley. I am told to figure out how to teach Tiers 1, 2, and 3 instructions in reading and writing to these 31 5th grades who range in abilities from 2nd to 8th grade. I cannot reach every student, no matter how hard I try in this scenario, and I take this pressure home with me every night. Our state government panics because our results on standardized reading and writing assessments show our students are leaving elementary school reading far below grade level. So, they push Read by Grade 3 on us, which comes with all the interventions and all the tracking and all the pressure, but none of the support. One intervention teacher split between three grades and a teacher with 31 kids is expected to catch everybody up to grade level. And each August, about 60% to 70% of my incoming students are still reading below grade level. So, I know this program is not working because it's not funded properly by the state. We are blamed for low student growth rates and we are forced to participate in SLOs, which up until recently was a six-week unit of study that accounted for 40% of our evaluation for nine months of teaching. Again, unfair pressure put on teachers to fix a broken system. Then there's State Bill 543 that attempts to fix the educational report card by slicing up a small and insufficient pie and giving pieces that are bigger to some and smaller pieces to others. It doesn't sound equitable to take money from the schools in rural Nevada where they struggle to retain and attract teachers due to their locations and give that money to Washoe and Clark County, and I can't imagine the stress they're under. We all take pressure home. I feel like I take it home with me every night when I have to choose between connecting with my girlfriend over dinner or grading essays or questioning starting a family and wondering if I can afford to live in Reno while paying for my family's insurance and needs because I can't do both. I feel a pressure when I can't put one red cent into savings because I'm a teacher in Nevada. I feel like I'm just surviving in this machine that prevents me from doing what I got into this profession to do, which has changed the future. But I'm feeling what I hope all of us in this room are feeling, which is a momentum and determination to push all of us to put the maximum pressure on our state lawmakers to fund our districts and our kids beyond the national average and to compensate every district employee so they can have a sustained community in the community that they serve. So, I appreciate you all for being part of this movement that takes pressure off of us and off of you and put it where it belongs, on the backs of the lawmakers and the state of Nevada. Thanks.
Thank you. Stacy Berry.
Good afternoon, thank you for letting me speak in front of you. My name is Stacy Berry. I'm a parent with a high schooler here and I would like to just share my thoughts about the decision that was made yesterday to ban out-of-state travel for athletic academic teams. We are two weeks away from spring break and parents and kids have worked tirelessly fundraising for these trips that were already planned. Parents have put up their own money for reservations, air, hotel, and I just want you guys to know that it's very detrimental. There are six schools in the district here that we're planning on going down. One of my questions is, will you help reimburse those teams with those funds? I kind of know the answer because I understand the position of what the district has financially, but you guys need to consider that. And I'd also like to ask the question, on what basis, other than what it seems to me out of fear? Was this decision made? Was there any medical consultant that provided you with information to put this travel ban on? I don't know if you can answer that now, or do you answer it at the end? At the end, okay. So, again, just that it puts these teams, athletic and academic teams that have worked very hard to go on these trips, they're rewarded with these trips whether they're competing for the state of Nevada, they're competing for their high school. And I just wish maybe a little more thought would have been put in. It doesn't seem like there was. So, I guess the question is, how much thought was put in? Who did you guys consult? And if anything, I understand the international travel ban. My request is you lift the out-of-state travel ban and let these kids go to what they've already planned. My statement is, along with that, you guys can't have, you guys can't make students and their families not go on a spring break trip, whether or not. And so, I understand the thought of not wanting, you know, the vulnerability of bringing the virus into the schools after spring break, but again, you can't prohibit any family from going on their already-planned spring break. So, where do you come across or what's your answer to why you're doing it just for the school trips? Thank you.
Hi. So, for clarification, it is district-sponsored, athletics, academic, and any other type of staff and student travel that the restrictions are on. And actually, we are not the only district in the state of Nevada, the fifth-largest school district in the country. Clark County School District has also instituted these exact strict guidelines. And I can tell you that we have worked in concert with the Washoe County Health District as far as this guidance and we will continue to do so. And it is for the welfare and benefit of all of our staff and students that we put these protocols in place. And according to our board policy, as far as it allows the superintendent to make these decisions for the health and welfare of our students and staff. Later today, we will be releasing letters that parents and our coaches, athletic directors and principals are able to use to provide to vendors, travel agencies, and such. That we have put these restrictions in place and I would absolutely hope that airlines and travel agencies and the such would take that letter and help with refunds or credits.
Okay, may I ask a question? Okay, I know, this is my first meeting, I've never been.
You're doing great.
That's good.
It's a part of the law that we can't get into a back and forth on this, but I know that...
I appreciate your time and your explanation.
Absolutely. We will be reaching out to anyone that emailed us as well with more information. And so, if you don't hear from us, please feel free to email and we can get you more answers to questions that way.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for this item. John Appolito.
My name is John Appolito. I'm also with Protect Nevada Children. I can feel this 5th grade teacher, that's pretty much how I felt several years ago after six years of teaching. I hate to say it, but I got out and started selling real estate so I could afford to live here. I'm not suggesting that, but that's what worked for me because we were going on our second kid by then. But anyway, and the first speaker, Margaret, you know, I noticed when she was speaking, three of you had your heads down or were talking to JJ. That's not acceptable at all. It's beyond frustrating, it really is. I want to remind you guys that I brought you information, oh, it's been about a year and a half now, that's talked about how the screen addiction is very much like drug addiction for a lot of these kids. And we had a mother here last school board meeting that said her kid ended up in rehab and the worst thing she ever did was give her kid a screen. I think it was a cellphone, but it could have been an iPad, and it led to the drugs. And I know you don't realize that initially, but I've given you guys information for almost two years about that and you continue to ignore it, you continue to put your head down when we speak, which is fine, you can do that. I also know that you are allowing kids on IEPs to get away from the screens. I know you're allowing parents to write that into their IEPs and we do appreciate that. The issue that I have in my house is I have four kids and one of my kids is much more susceptible to the negative effects of screens than my other three. He is not on an IEP. He spends two hours a day on a screen for his schoolwork. And for honors biology, two nights ago, he was just playing a video game and I can see his face change when he does this stuff. Honors biology extra credit should not be playing games. I know you guys are trying to level the playing field and I understand the reason for it, but it's ridiculous. And he shouldn't be playing video games for honors biology, sorry. And again, that's the kid that it affects in my house. He's not on an IEP. I can't get it written into his education plan, no screens, unfortunately. This ClassDojo, this is one of these vendors that we asked about. We asked in a FOIA request, we asked, quote, "Which of these vendors, these free vendors, are creating profiles on our children?" And we asked, "Is ClassDojo the only vendor creating psychological profiles on our children?" And the district's response was, to both of those questions, the response was, quote, "Nevada law does not require the district to answer questions as part of a public records request." Blah, blah, blah. So, the more honest answer would have been, you have no idea who's creating profiles or psychological profiles on the kids. And that's why I'm going to announce right now, I am running for school board, Katie's old seat, so I'd like to speak with you if you have a moment sometime in the next couple of weeks. Thank you very much for your time. John Appolito, Protect Nevada Children.
Thank you. That's all? Okay. Agenda Item 4.01 is a presentation and discussion regarding Empower Nevada's future and the associated pledge from the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, EDON, to advocate for increasing education funding in Nevada. And this is being presented today by Mr. Mike Kaznerzki. Feel free to have a seat there if you want, or you can stand, either way.
I'm hot, okay. And we're on. Madam President, trustees, I'm Mike Kaznerzki, CEO of EDON Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. And I'm here to give you a quick update on Empower Nevada's Future Initiative, petition pledge that we're promoting across the state. First of all, I thank you as a board for all you do for our community and for our kids, but a special thanks to the entire district, the staff, and especially the teachers. My wife is a former 5th grade teacher, has felt the frustration that you heard from a little bit today, and I'm sure you're totally aware of, much of which is driven by a lack of funding. At the end of the day, with adequate funding, we reduce classroom size, we pay teachers more, and we give our kids an opportunity to really succeed in this changing environment. So, I wanted to give you this update about the pledge. And we're doing this, I'm sure, is the middle, there it is. Got it? You're gonna do it, next slide, please. And the pledge, we're doing in concert with Southern Nevada. And ultimately, the pledge is something that we will hopefully get enough signatures to influence our legislators to put funding for education at the top of their funding list. So, next slide, please. It gives parents, students, and businesses a voice. Right now, our parents don't really have a voice unless they hire a lobbyist, and you know they don't do that. And we do that through some of the unions with very specific agendas, but if the average parent, the average business leader doesn't have a lobbyist to beat on our legislature and get their attention. So, what this pledge is designed to do is just that, really send them a message and also tell them they've got their back. And oftentimes legislators are not willing to step up and support a tax initiative because they're going to get voted out of office, or at least they think so. If they feel like the voters support them, they're more willing to do that. Next slide, please. The pledge is simple, it's five points in the pledge. Make K-12 education top funding priority in the state. Pretty simple. What's more important than educating our kids? Identify resources. By 2024, have legislation in place and by 2030, have our funding for our kids and the next generation of our economy at the national average. I mean, how hard is that? Can you imagine a parent that doesn't want our kids to be supported at the national average by 2030? I mean, talk about a low bar. Support candidates, elected officials that do that and encourage others to sign the pledge. It's a really simple pledge. We have not fully promoted it yet, although we have at some of EDON events talked about it. Next slide, please. So, why do we need this shared vision? We talked about the lobbyists. We've underfunded education too long, we all know that, and our tax system is broken. It's designed around a very small state with some gaming and some tourism and not what we've become. Next slide, please. The new economy and the economy we're experiencing, especially up here in the north, requires highly-educated workforce. And it really requires teachers to do things that are nearly impossible in elevating and training our kids on coding and robotics and all the things that we know the next generation of jobs needs when they have a 30, 40-person classroom and a bunch of IEPs. It's just, we're just not getting there with the funding we have and the system we have. Next slide, please. This is, you've seen this slide before? As I like to say when I talk in a forum on this, if any of our kids brought that report card home, we would probably have a long talk with them and maybe more. And yet, we've done this five years in a row. Next slide, please. Per pupil funding nationally, and again, the numbers are our numbers, we use an outside source to get this, we're about 30% less than the national average. It doesn't sound like much until it's $3,000 per student. What does that do to a district of our size and what could we do with that funding? Average classroom size is clearly the way we've patched it together and we're almost 10 students larger than the national average. Clark County's even bigger. Next slide, please. The pledge changes that in many ways. It makes education our top priority and requires the legislature to actually endorse this vision. And again, we're not telling them how to do the job. We can't, as soon as you get behind any particular initiative, you're in trouble because someone's going to attack you. We're telling them to do their job and get us to the national average and you've got a little bit of time to do that. Next slide, please. We clearly don't have the resources. Next slide, please. At this time, but in part because of the way we do things. Our state structure is focused on sales tax primarily, that certainly hurts us. The income tax, no corporate tax, all these other funding streams other states have used to get education funded adequately, we don't have. And probably the worst thing we have is depreciation of our real property, the only state in the nation to do that. So, there are some things in that mix that the legislature can get involved in and take on. We've even capped our property tax increases, which further... We've even capped our property tax increases, which further exacerbates our problems. Next slide, please. And this is what happens just here in Marshall County. When we put the cap in place, if we hit a recession, you ratchet down the funding even though the need continues to go up. And you, I mean, you've seen this slide before. We use this in the Save Our Schools Initiative. It clearly shows a gap. Next slide, please. So if you look at state funding, and I've actually done this and gone through the legislative appropriation reports, what do we have for appropriation, and what are we using to fund K-12, K-12 education? We've increased the appropriations by 37%, but we've increased education by 18% or roughly half the rate of all of our other appropriations. This doesn't cover all the other places you can get funding. This just talks about the state doing their job and funding education. Next slide, please. What this means in Marshall County? Next slide, please. The two lines, one is, yeah, look at all the funding we've given and look at how we've increased funding over the years, but when you put in inflation, we're cutting and cutting and cutting. And you felt that as you balanced the budget by cutting $60 million out of a budget that doesn't adequately meet our needs over the last three years. Next slide, please. Some of the programs, and I'm not going to go through this, I mean, when you're cutting teachers, you're cutting the bone. You're no longer cutting the fat. Next slide, please. And our other priorities, we as a state tried to fix this in other ways, the IP1 room tax, 10 years ago, in 2009, 10 years ago, approved by voters, would have added $1.8 billion to our system, and yet what the legislature did is said, okay, the glass is this big, we're going to take that funding and pour it in the glass, and anything that comes out, we're going to use on anything we want. And we're going to make sure every penny goes into glass, but we're not going to account for what really has been diverted. And the diversion of our education funding is something the state has done for many years. What I want to highlight, oftentimes people say, we just passed an initiative for schools. The WC1 initiative is to get our buildings up to code in many cases and give our kids an environment, but we're building schools that we don't have the teachers to adequately staff. So it's a totally different pot of funding, and that really is something that we will promote as a, as part of this initiative. Next slide, please. And then I love when someone says, well, I voted for the marijuana tax, I should fix the problem. Well, you probably are on the marijuana if you think it fixes the problem. It's a very small sliver of our overall need. Next slide, please. Of course, this is something you experience on a day-to-day basis. We've been doing this year after year after year, and yet we hear from the teachers what's happening at ground zero. And those are our kids and our future employees that they have to deal with and have to feel responsible to educate. Next slide, please. So how can you help? We've got a coalition. We are starting that now. We will have a rollout and a press conference in Vegas by the end of the month. That's our target. We're locking down the date as we speak. We really need everyone to sign the pledge. And it's a vision, it's not a how-to, and encourage others to sign the pledge. We will roll this out after the press conference, encouraging not just through media, but through social media. You can sign up online, you can physically sign the pledge. The goal is by the next legislative session to have, I think, next slide, is our goals? No. Our goal is to have 250,000 signatures and as many as 500,000 by the legislative session. If we can go to the legislature and say, here is what you need in order to do your job, we think that will have an impact, and it will help them understand what we need. So what I'm asking of the Board of Trustees is, you know, I don't know what you can do legally, I'm not going to get involved in that, but I do think there may be a way you can provide some kind of, consider a resolution of support or some kind of initiative that we can use to say, you're on board as part of this resolution. And for that, I'd offer, open it up for any questions you have.
Well, thank you so much. This is just, I think, when, at least, I first heard about it was just so meaningful to know that, you know, I think something that as a board we've been talking about since I joined, every time we have to face the budget, you know, we look at these graphs and charts that show the differences in, you know, what we're actually getting and what we actually need. So it's very powerful to see that, you know, that there is a concerted effort in the community to take on this issue and to make a point of, as a business community, taking it to the legislature as an important piece of adequately or funding education for this state. And I don't think it should be adequate. It should be, I mean, I really think even meeting just the national average, you know, we, Nevada deserves better than that. So, thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Yeah?
Hi, Mike. Thanks for coming. Not a question really, but a comment is just, and President Raymond said partially, is just having the business community get behind it. I saw what happens when you lend your influence to an initiative when it comes down. I got to see that firsthand, as you know, with WC1. And I just really, as much as we appreciate that, we appreciate this just as much because it's just as large of a problem, if not larger, quite frankly. So thank you for lending your influence, your name, your power and support behind something like this, because I know you make things happen. You make things happen, and you make things happen for our kids. So I just really want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. What we try to do is build a team, and we have some team members in here today that are supportive of our coalition. I'd like you to be a part of the team, formally or informally. You have social media networks you'll be able to connect with, and ultimately, I think if the team gets together and asks those elected to do their job, they'll actually come through for us.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. And Mike, I want to thank you as well. I sit on the EDON Board representing the school board, and just want to thank you for your leadership and the support of the entire EDON Board who did vote to sign the pledge. And that's huge, as my colleagues have said. Having the business community behind us, I know our teachers appreciate it, I know our staff appreciates it, and I know we all appreciate it. Nothing could be more important, but it takes others than those of us who are inside to speak that truth. And so as Angie has said, you know, you get things done, and we're very, very grateful for all you do.
Thank you.
Scott, I just want to make sure I'm not missing you. Do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add. I mean, this is all, it's the facts presented, these are all very sobering facts that we know a lot about. I just wanted to thank Mr. Kaznierski for coming to the board meeting and presenting it and letting us know about this initiative, and so I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add, I know this is for information and discussion only, but I know that we have had a resolution of support from this board in the past, seeking increased funding, and so if there's a way that, and I would be happy to submit it under future agenda item requests, that we bring back an updated resolution of support for the effort for increased funding for our students.
Any public comment on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Martini.
Hello, Margaret Martini in Clay Village. This was a great presentation, and I have great empathy for the teachers in the classroom and what they're trying to do. I've looked at the school budgets, I've studied all of this stuff, and here's my take on it. We spend way too much, way too much in administration fees and not enough on the teacher salaries. We are not looking at the problem of saying an employee ought it. We are spending entirely, entirely, too much money on social engineering programs and not enough on education. The school district should not be involved in any social engineering at all. You're supposed to teach. When I went to school, that's what the teachers did. We learned reading, writing, and arithmetic, and we didn't get four Fs or five Fs or whatever it is on that scoreboard. You guys are not doing your job. You're not protecting the children, and you're not educating the children. And I think you really need to take a long, hard look at where those dollars should be spent. We give you money, we give you money, and nothing changes. Nothing changes except more programs and more administration, and the teachers are left, you know, with the bottom of the barrel, and that's not right. And you really need to take a better look at what you're doing. You're supposed to educate, not social engineer. Reconfigure that budget, put the money where the money should be so that Nevada is not at the bottom of the barrels and the teachers are not at the bottom of the education barrel. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4.02. Presentation and Discussion on the Importance of Early Childhood Education Opportunities and Transitioning Students to Kindergarten Provided by the Washoe County School District Department of Child and Family Services. This is for presentation and discussion only, and we have with us not Dr. Paul Lamarcas, but Victor Shabondi. Oh, there he is in the back. I just didn't see you. Victor Shabondi and Tina Springmeyer, Director of Child and Family Services. And Victor is Executive Director, Strategies Office.
Thank you, President Raymond. Interim Superintendent McNeil, fellow trustees, Trustee Kelly on the phone, Victor Shabondi for the record, Executive Director, Strategies Office.
Good afternoon, President Raymond, Interim Superintendent McNeil, and all the other trustees. I'm sorry I can't do that that fast. Tina Springmeyer, the Director of Child and Family Services. We're excited to talk to you about early childhood this afternoon.
Yep, and as Tina just said, we are here today to talk to you about one of the most impactful and important levels of education that we have in our district. We're also here to talk about the opportunities that early childhood education creates and how early childhood helps prepare students for kindergarten. So moving on to our presentation. The mission of the Child and Family Services Department is to prepare children to be successful in school by building a strong homeschool connection with parents to support their children through educational and school readiness activities and to support the statewide early childhood community through professional development, training, and resources.
The Child and Family Services Department is comprised of everything early childhood within our school district, and then we also have statewide programs. So we have the Early Childhood Education Programs, which are comprised of our special ed classrooms and our gen ed programs. Then we have our Child Fine Program that is our federally mandated program that does evaluations to determine whether or not children need special education services. We have infant-to-thirteen programs. We have three of those programs located in three high schools. Then we have the Nevada Registry and Nevada Pre-K Standards and the Early Learning Guidelines Programs, which are the statewide programs for standards. I wear two hats. I'm also the Pre-K Standards Coordinator for the state, so I love standards, and we have those in place for early childhood. So I know you can't see the screen because I certainly can't, but you do have a copy of this org chart. So this really describes our department. And as you can see, we're pretty vast. We have our statewide programs for the Nevada Registry, which is the professional development system for the whole state. And if you are an early childhood educator and you are in a community-based setting or you provide direct service for early childhood, you have to be on the Nevada Registry. It's written into law. Then we have our Infant-Tothirteen Program, which is serving our infant toddlers and our teen parent program. We have a sub-grantee for UNR Head Start. Then we have all of our early childhood programs. So we are fortunate to have several different folks supporting us. We have an IC Instructional Coordinator who supervises Child Fine, but she also supports all of our special education classrooms throughout the district. And we have an Implementation Specialist who also supports that. And then we have three early childhood educators, coordinators, who actually support the other pre-k programs. So combined in our department, we have 93.5 classrooms throughout 52 schools, and we have 40 grant-funded programs and 53.5 special ed classrooms.
Sorry, can you repeat? How many pre-k classrooms are?
We have 93.5. So we have 40 grant-funded and 53.5. We have a half, we have a .5 program.
We'll talk about that again later on in the presentation as well. In talking about the responsibilities of the Child and Family Services Department, really, one of the most important ones is to provide high-quality programming for all of our early childhood students that we serve. Also, we really want good student outcomes, and we want those students to be able to demonstrate growth in those programs as well as they're getting prepared for kindergarten. And we do this through rigorous standards, rich instruction, and those students are better prepared as a result of this experience for kinder, so. So in looking at some research, not only locally but across the country, we know that children who attend high-quality preschool programs are less likely to utilize special education services or be retained in their grade, and they are more likely to graduate from high school, go on to college, graduate high school on time, and succeed in their careers than those who have not attended high-quality preschool programs. We also know that significant new investments in high-quality early education are necessary to help states, local communities, and parents close the school readiness gaps between disadvantaged children and their more advantaged peers.
So getting ready for kindergarten, honestly, in early childhood, it's really, it starts with the first phone call or conversation we have with parents when they enter our programs because we're the first entry into formal education. So we understand that our parents are so important to us, family engagement is really critical to our work, but it's also important to reassure parents and guide them through the process through pre-k, whether it's a special ed setting or a gen ed setting. So for us, in early childhood, I had mentioned that I am the Pre-K Standards Coordinator, and I do have copies and I can share these with you, but we do follow this as our guidelines in our early childhood classrooms. So all of the activities, all of the program we do is really followed under the framework of standards, and we want to make sure that we're using them in all of our daily work. And also, our content standards are really based off the K-12 standards at one point. So we follow math, science, creative arts, music and movement, physical development and health. And certainly, I think the biggest standard that we follow is social-emotional development. That's really all we do in an early childhood classroom, is we help our young learners learn how to navigate the day without mom and dad, and they learn how to interact with their peers. And then if that goes really well, then that's when the academics fall into place. So it's really important that we set the foundation for that. And then pre-k programs, we really focus on the pre-k to k transition. So we know that that's really our primary goal, is to get children ready for k. And I did bring some additional resources, too, that we use across our programs. We have Ready for K that we give to our families throughout another event. But it's really important that we have those honest conversations about what's coming and how to assure families that their child's ready for the next step, and then how we can ease those fears. Because as you can imagine, we're an early childhood program, and we're not housed in a really beautiful center out in a community that was designed for early childhood students. We're in schools where children are walking in with K6, well, soon to be K5, school settings. And it's a little nerve-wracking, I think, for some parents, but overall, it's something we take very seriously. Sorry, turn the page. So here's an example of what our programs look like. So regardless of the funding stream, we have the same expectations across the board, but you can see the differences between our special ed programs and our general education programs. Our special ed programs are funded by special education, and we have a developmental pre-k, a strategies program, an integrated program. Our hours look differently. We have AM and PM classes four to five days a week, and we provide transportation for our special education students. On the gen ed side, they're all grant-funded, so we have to adhere to all the funding requirements, whether it's income criteria, age criteria, or the other guidance and compliance that we have to adhere to, like Title I and Zoom. And then it's either a full day or half-day programs. The majority of our grant-funded programs are full day, so we provide 25 hours of instruction, and those are either four or five days a week. And then we also have our infant-tothirteen program, serving our teen parents so that our teens can come to school, they can go to school, they can go towards graduation, and then we provide home visiting among other resources to support them in that program. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So the program practices, what I'd mentioned earlier, is that we have high expectations across the board for all of our programs. And regardless, again, of the funding stream, whether it's grant-funded or special education-funded, we want good student outcomes for our students. And the big piece, too, is our family engagement component. So again, it starts with the initial contact. So, again, it starts with the initial contact and carries throughout the school year with our families. If your child's in a special ed setting, it could be two or three years, but in a grant-funded program, it's a one-year only. So, you can see that we have shared program assessments. We follow the Brigant Screen, the Brigant Inventory, and the ECHERS. Those are all really useful tools. The Brigant Screen is exciting for us because it really guides our instruction and it gives us a place to start where children are coming into our programs. And it's also a nice way to segue into kindergarten because the Brigant Screen is also used for the kA for our kindergarten students. So, eventually, we'll be able to have some data to actually show that over time. Then for the professional development, it's really important for us to have shared professional learning communities across our programs. And I'm happy to say, I'm really proud of the work that we do. We've only been together for a few short years. Previously, special ed and general ed were very isolated and siloed, and we merged in 2016, and it's been very successful. Yes, we've had some bumps, but overall, I think our teachers really love working together. And there's nothing more exciting than to see our gen ed, our special ed teachers coming together and having shared conversations about curriculum, guidance, even ideas about what they can do in their classrooms. And then certainly, our curriculum development, we have the Frog Street Curriculum now that we're implementing, and that has very good components that we're working with conscious discipline and using, again, applying our standards. And then the social-emotional strategies because so much of what we do is really critical throughout the day, again, helping our youngest learners navigate the day.
So, moving on to our, sorry. Moving on to our district's strategic plan, there is a metric, Metric 154, Initiative 154, in our strategic plan that talks specifically about increasing the number of integrated early childhood classrooms throughout the district, obviously commensurate with funding because it is a slightly more expensive model. So, along those lines, the current status of Metric 154 is that early childhood education programs are comprised of 93 and a half classrooms, which Tina alluded to earlier, and 53.5 of those are special education classrooms, 40 of them are general ed or grant-funded classes, and three of them are teen-parent programs, and we are located currently in 52 schools. So, right about half of our schools. So, combined programming currently serves, and when we submitted this PowerPoint, this number increases every day. And so, as of today, we are at 1,685, so 85 students higher than when we submitted it a few weeks ago or whatever, a month ago. And so, that's how many pre-k students we have, and 24 infants and toddlers. So, it's a big program. And expanding integrated practices and programs is a top priority for our early childhood department. And the goal is to increase the number of integrated classrooms by about 5% annually, and that is reflected in a slide that you'll see shortly. Barriers to full implementation. Our grant-funded ECE programs are fully funded by state and federal grants. Therefore, services provided are determined by the grants that are awarded to the district. And for those of you that remember this past summer, we had a lot of challenges with that because it was kind of a perfect storm and that all of those grants were sunsetting at the same time. And so, it put us in a tough spot. But luckily, at the end of the day, we were able to fund all of our programs. And disparities between the programs, between the special ed and the general ed programs, Tina alluded to a few of those. One of the disparities is with the hours, really 10 hours of instruction on the special ed side to about 25 on the general ed side. And that's not for every program, but that's for most of the programs. And then, of course, transportation. We provide the transportation on the special ed side but not the general ed side. Finding suitable classroom space to expand throughout the district, historically, that's been a challenge. It is getting a little easier to find space in elementary classroom or elementary schools because of sixth grade moving out. And in hiring qualified, highly qualified certified ECE teachers is a challenge. We know that hiring any teacher is a challenge, but because it requires an additional endorsement on the ECE side, that just creates more of a challenge. And we hope that that pipeline through all of our teacher prep programs across this country remains strong because this is such a critical time, educational time in a child's life, so.
I would like to mention though too that we are fortunate to provide the early childhood ARL program, and we're on our third cohort. And we actually have hired all of the other candidates that have gone through our program, so it's pretty exciting.
ARL stands for Alternative Route to License.
Yes, sorry.
That's me. So, this is what I was alluding to earlier. This is evidence that we are meeting our goal of 5%. We've actually exceeded it recently. In looking at the 1920 data, we went from, our goal was 22, and we actually had 28 integrated programs in our district. So, that is growing according to Metric 154. And we don't know for sure what the data for next year will look like yet, but we are hopeful that we will have at least a 5% growth.
Thank you. So, moving forward, looking at our data over time, so in early childhood, it's not just birth at age five. Early childhood is honestly birth through age eight. So, it makes sense to look at pre-k to third grade. So, considerations for the data that we want to look at moving forward is certainly when we look at kindergarten readiness, if we can start to track our Brigant Screen that we're using in pre-k and in kindergarten. And I failed to mention that we also use the Brigant Screen with our infant toddlers in our infant-tother programs. And then kindergarten achievement, certainly following MAP scores. Those students have actually been in our programs, tracking their success moving forward. And then the third-grade S-VAC, tracking students from pre-k to third grade, watching to see what they do. We've historically, in the grant side, had a number of different assessments that were no longer required to use. So, unfortunately, we're starting a little bit over in some capacity, but we have been able to show, the longitudinal study through the State Department, that the students that were in our early childhood programs, and again, we've been in this program for close to 20 years in early childhood, that our students were outperforming their peers. But keep in mind too, the numbers that we were serving were much fewer than we are now. Originally, even when I started as the director of the program, I only had 18 grant-funded programs versus the 40 we currently have. So, we know that we can start to track that data. And then monitoring the exit rates from early childhood special ed, that's important for us to keep our hand on that and our pulse on that, to continue to monitor that. Certainly, we want to provide services for students who are evaluated and need those special services, but we also hope to get them exited into a gen ed setting as well.
So, we would like to thank you for the opportunity to talk about early childhood with all of you today and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. That was really great information. Is there any questions? Vice President Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks for that. That was good. I think we all understand, at least around this table, the importance of early childhood education, right? How graduation really starts then. One of the things that I ran into as I began to learn more about this a few years ago, was talking to a friend of mine, is her child wasn't quite ready, wasn't, it was the year before, it should have been in pre-k because the next year, this child was going to pre-k, was going to kindergarten. And so, I asked her, why isn't your child in the pre-k program? And she said, oh, why should he be that? And I said, well, because that's what he'll learn. And I went over a couple. Oh, that's what kindergarten's for. So, part of what I'm running into, yes, as I have more and more of this conversation, is people, you know, that are old, like me, that think, that remember those are the things you learned in kindergarten, and how do we help to kind of change that public perception that it really does begin before then now?
That's a great question. Honestly, I think it's educating, of course, educating our families. And honestly, I think our families feel somewhat pressured too to have their children eager and ready for k, right? Because the expectation is, gosh, I actually get several phone calls, like my child, I'm not sure he's ready, can I keep him back? You know, parents want a red shirt because they don't think he's ready for the next step. And so, easing their fears, giving them the information. And very often, families don't realize that their child's already exceeded the standards and they're not sure what they're doing. And so, it's like educating our families to remind them that they're their child's first teacher, and we applaud and support that. So, empowering families to know that their role is far more important in getting them ready as long as we're partners moving forward.
Trustee Cato.
Thank you. You said we have 52 schools that have early childhood?
Yes.
Is that spread out all across the entire district? Or are there some areas of the district where we aren't? We don't have this in the schools where we may want to look at adding it?
So, the majority of our grant-funded programs are in Title I schools with the exception of Incline. But we are pretty spread out. So, we have an integrated program at Incline and a grant-funded program at Incline. And then we have an integrated program at Natchez Elementary School, but the majority, excuse me, are in Reno Sparks. And then we do have even programs in Pleasant Valley. And then you'll find our grant-funded programs, we're pretty good about securing spots. So, we actually have some programs in middle schools, we've had them in high schools, we used to be in a Cal Bus, so wherever we can meet the needs for families.
Perfect. I have spoken to a few principals of middle schools and high schools that have the program, and they've spoken so highly of it because they integrate it into their curriculum where the older students are working with the kids. And that's awesome to see. So, I think it's interesting that, I think it's the assumption that this program's just in elementary schools, where in many cases, it's actually in a high school or a middle school, and then those older students are helping the staff, which is cool to see. So, this is awesome. Thanks for the presentation.
I would just add quickly that on the special education side, we do really try to be mindful of a regionalization approach because we know that we have 53 and a half classrooms in different types of programmings, whether it's EC strategies, integrated, or a developmental class. But we try to spread those out regionally so that we can meet the demand of the community.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you. And I know, I think everyone up here is a pretty strong believer in early childhood education. And that occurred to me when you said we've been doing this for 20 years in this district. I'm wondering if we have any research on our own kids and how early childhood education has contributed to their graduation rates? I don't know. If we don't have it, it would be interesting to find that out because we have that longitudinal look now.
You're asking me a question? I'm so sorry. I appreciate that conversation, yes, for sure. I think we could track some of it, for sure, over time. I think that's really our goal moving forward, how we can better track that. But we are excited to have the graduates that we do have. And actually, we actually have graduates coming back with their children in our program. So, we do have that. And I can say that we've hired some staff who were in our Cal Bus program. Yes, yes.
So, one question I have, or I guess a couple. The programs that we do have, I know we would love to have more, but we just don't have the resources to have more of those pre-k programs. So, what are the alternatives in our community for families that aren't able to take advantage of our pre-k programs? I know, I just anecdotally know of, you know, preschools that offer kind of pre-k programs and then churches and things like that. Are they following the same guidelines and how does that work?
Well, as you know, pre-k is really expensive for our families. And for how we're serving our grant-funded families, we're really targeting our most vulnerable families, so they have to meet income criteria and their child has to meet an age criteria in order to be a part of the program. Our Zoom-funded programs are relatively uniquely different because we're targeting our dual-language learners and we don't have as many of those programs. But there is Head Start, there's other programs that we try to pair, and Head Start actually has a little bit more stringent criteria than we have because they actually, you have to be at 100% poverty level, and it's very low. But so, we often, families that don't qualify for Head Start will qualify for a program. I wish I had a better answer. I actually sit on the state ECAC and on several advisory boards, and we have these conversations about we have childcare deserts, especially when it comes to three-year-olds, because infant-tother programs serve 0 to 3, or early Head Start, 0 to 3, and we serve fours. So, those three-year-olds have to find other alternate care. And, I mean, ideally, universal pre-k would be great so we could serve all families who wanted it.
President Raymond, I would just add, because it might be of interest to some of the trustees, that on the grant-funded or general ed side, it's all funded by grants. And so, we don't receive as a district any DSA funding there. On the special ed side, we do get .6 DSA funding per pre-k student. And so, and the reason for that is because it's a half-day program, so.
I would like to mention though that in our special ed programs, we do encourage to have peer models. So, there are opportunities for families to go to the local schools if we have programs there, and we do have multiple peer models in our programs.
We've seen that in the classroom before. Did you have something to add, Dr.? Oh, Trustee Cato?
Thank you. Can you just real quickly, just give us an overview on the funding challenges? Because I remember, I forget what it was, it was last year in my orientation being trustee that early childhood and adult education is hard to fund because it's outside the K-12. And so, there's different funding that has to be used. I don't know if I'm on the right track in terms of attendance. Shaking your head, yes. So, can you just explain the funding challenges we have with early childhood because it is before kindergarten and we're required to start providing public education?
You can, we can take you.
Okay. I think I'll begin answering that question, and it's a great question. And certainly, we would love to see the state fund early childhood education in a greater capacity than they currently are because we know the value of it. But with that said, the grants are all soft money and they have lifespans. And so, it's really hard to sustain 40 classrooms in our district when the money may go away in a few years. And we don't know for sure if it's going to be refunded, or we don't know what the next step is to sustain that programming. On the special ed side, I just alluded to the fact that they're funded at .6 DSA for the AM or PM half-day programs. If there was a way to increase DSA funding for all students, then DSA funding for EC would also be, I think theoretically, increased as well. So, I think that's some of the challenges.
So, also, for the state pre-k program, the state pre-k program is actually the grant that supported the Cal Bus for a number of years and then funding to move into schools. But then it was flat-funded for at least, I don't know, 12 years at least. Looking at Kristen, thank you. So, in addition to that though, then we had a big federal grant, which was Nevada Ready, and that was a four-year grant. And it went from, you know, we had the state pre-k funding, we have Zoom funding, we had Title, but then we have this Nevada Ready program that brought in all the criteria. So, we had to meet, families had to be at 200% poverty level or below. It was 25 hours of instruction. Children had to be four. They have to be four by September 30. There's no wiggle room. And so, that provided for us to expand. And then when that sunsetted, the state looked at that funding and they had said, it was at that point, that was State Superintendent Caballero, and he was really dedicated to that. And so, he wanted to keep that program going. So, they collapsed the state pre-k funding into that pot, and then they'd kind of matched it, and that's where we're at now. So, the state is funding 19.5 million, I think, in early childhood statewide. So, that's for all the different counties and districts.
It is low. So, just really quickly, so thank you so much, Tina. I know we go way, way back. And Cal Bus stands for Classroom on Wheels, just so everybody knows. It does look like a cow. And thank you so much, Victor, for all your preparation on this presentation. I'm wondering if, because I think a strong component of early childhood education is always involving the parents, and you all have such a robust program around home visits. Could you just spend just a couple minutes talking a little bit about the home visit part of early childhood education and how important that is?
Of course. I honestly wish we did that across our programs, but we don't. But many of our programs, many of our teachers do encourage, we encourage that with our families, and our teachers are doing home visits. Where we see the majority of our home visits are happening in our infant-tother programs. And so, you can imagine, we're serving our teen parents who are very often, we have 14, 15-year-old teen parents. And so, we're going to their homes, providing support. They're getting the resources plus the diapers, the formula to support them. So, again, it's really giving our, we're following the PAT program, Parents as Teachers, supporting, giving the parents the tools and strategies on how to be a better parent, but also mentoring them because they're still in high school and they still need their parents. but also mentoring them because they're still in high school and they still need that component. So we are doing that. And then in the pre-K programs, we're supporting families and going into their homes as well. And those are the families that are most vulnerable. So those are the families that may be homeless in a couple of weeks. Those families are really struggling to live here because their income is so low. So again, we're going to their homes, giving them strategies, taking books to the home, providing support, bringing other toys into the home to support learning, and giving them suggestions. But more importantly, building those relationships and friendships with families so they know that we care about them, we care about their child, and we want the best outcomes, like they do.
And then I'll just say on my perpetual soapbox for early childhood education, you know, at the federal level, we were one of the very first districts in this state to fund early childhood education using our Title I funds. And unfortunately, with the recent reductions in Title I funds, we know that that's going to be a big hit. And I know that we're looking at Nevada pre-K to help us pick up some of those classrooms. So when we talk about the braiding of funding, I think a prime example is what we do in our early childhood education programs, because we don't use general funds for that, other than the .6 for special education on the DSA side. But otherwise, it is exclusively held together with grant funding. And you all just do a tremendous job in doing that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have public comment on this item, so.
Natha Anderson.
Good evening, Natha Anderson. First, I'm going to start off speaking on behalf of the Washoe Education Association. And if there's time, I will transition into a high school English teacher that has to do with child development, or, I'm sorry, early childhood education, sorry, Tina. First and foremost, from the association, I'm so happy to hear Trustee Cottrell's question because that was something I was going to bring up. It worked so perfectly with Mr. Kasemirsky's presentation. Too often, we are waiting for grants to come in, and then we find out in August whether or not we're going to get it for our early childhood educators, and then we're not able to capture them as early childhood educators. They've already taken a job as a fifth or sixth grade teacher, when it's very clear as brand-new teachers, they would be excellent with their three and four-year-olds. So that's just one little issue that we have with the funding. And so being aware of that, I think, is really important. The other thing also that I want to bring up was the shared professional development that was part of your guys' presentation. This is huge for our educators. Too often, we're expected to go into our PLCs and get this, 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 checkmark this box, get this done, get this done. And we don't get a chance just to talk and to collaborate between the gen ed teacher and the special ed teacher. The cadre that has been created, they do an excellent job of that. And so there is respect between both our special ed, early childhood educators, as well as our gen ed, early childhood educators. So just also want to bring up how much I respect that, because there's time for the strong discussions. And I do have time. I'm now going to transfer over into the high school English teacher. I have nothing to do with early childhood kids, except for the fact that they scare me when there's more than four of them together, because I don't know how to teach that. But I realize as a high school English teacher that I can't do the Bloom stuff unless they have that Maslow stuff. And that's really one of the most important qualities that is presented by our early childhood educators. And that's to make sure that the families and the kids know that school is a safe place where they will be loved and helped in their journey. And hopefully, if we're doing our job as educators, even in the high school, we have continued that presence that has been started when they were three and four years old because of the work that those educators have done. So I just wanted to thank you guys for the presentation. And then also, we need to get some more funding for it at the state level and not by a grant. It has to be continual, and that's one reason why Mr. Kasemirsky's presentation, as well as many other presentations around education funding, is so incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you. John Epalito.
Hi, my name is John Epalito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children, and as I just mentioned, I'm running for school board G at large. The early childhood education, all four of my kids did two years of early childhood education that we paid for because I don't think it was available. The type of early childhood education they did was a lot of play-based. We felt, both my wife and I are teachers, we felt that by kindergarten, they were way ready for kindergarten. I know I read more and more about the early childhood education, that is getting kids ready for testing, getting kids ready for, like, have a portfolio for kindergarten. And I don't think that type of early childhood education is beneficial for the kids. I'm not sure what we do in this district, I'll find out more as time goes by. And the only thing in the slide show that I noticed was the SBACK test in third grade. And I know, you know, we've been saying this for several years, since before most of you were here, that SBACK test, I'm not saying it's child abuse for kids, but that's an eight-to-10-hour test for third graders. It borders child abuse. It's ridiculous. None of my kids ever took any of the SBACK tests. And there's other reasons, too, just besides its ridiculous waste of time and the time preparing for the test. And I'll remind you, especially the trustees that weren't here back when it happened, there was a school board up in Oregon, I believe it was Springfield, Oregon, and every school board member voted to suggest parents opt their kids out of the SBACK test. And that, Oregon, is a place where they have a state law, just like California, that makes opt-out a state right. And the 5% federal government thing, that's a whole separate thing. And we tried that last semester with, or not semester, but last session with AV312, SBACK, and to make it count a lot less towards teachers' evaluations and to let the kids be able to opt-out. But unfortunately, for political reasons, we couldn't get a hearing. It was Assemblywoman Krasner who carried that bill for us. And I took Natha's advice, and I went in to try to make an appointment with the Superintendent of Public Instruction, and her person came out and said, sure, yeah, I can get you that appointment in two to four months. So that was another factor that got me to decide to come here and be part of this board. Two to four months, the kids don't have two to four months. The kids need protection and help now. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you both very much. Thanks for your time and great presentation and all the work.
Thank you.
Do I need to go up there? I'm on the agenda. Okay. Well, who runs the meeting if I go up there?
The president.
Yes, I should move me off. Okay, we're going to move on to. All right. Nathan will run the meeting. Nathan and Ray will run the meeting, and JJ. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 4.03. 4.03, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve a Proposed Code of Conduct for the Board of Trustees as Provided by the National School Boards Association and the Nevada School Boards Association, Including Information on Ethics Training Being Developed for Washoe County School District Leadership and Management. This is for possible action. And before, oh, before us, we see the President of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, Melina Raymond. And friends, please introduce your guests.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice President. For the record, my name is Melina Raymond, and I'm the President of the Board. I can't even say it with a straight face. And I am joined by our Superintendent, interim Superintendent, Dr. Kristin McNeil, and Chief General Counsel, Neil Rombardo. And, oh, you have a question.
Yes, Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'd like to move for approval. I'm serious. It's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful, it's a wonderful document, and I think it's a great thing for us to do, and I'd like to make a motion for approval.
That was such a riveting introduction, persuasive, informational. There is a motion on the floor from Trustee Simon Holland that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed code of conduct. There is a second. It was a die for lack of a second. There is a second from Trustee Calvert. Is there any discussion on the motion? Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion carries, and let the record show that it is unanimous. What a presentation.
It took me longer to pull that up than it did. It took three and a half hours.
Yeah, that's, that's what we are afraid of, Neil. We couldn't give you the mic, man.
Just driving out the sister out.
Yes, you're welcome, huh?
Well, I did have a funny joke, but all right. However you like.
Well, thank you very much for that support. Agenda Item 4.04 is Approval of Award of Bid Number 014-23-01-20, Information Technology Networking Equipment to NTT America Solutions in the amount of $22,675,000. The initial three-and-a-half-year term beginning October 1, 2020, and ending March 30, 2024, with two optional one-year renewals, and this is for possible action. And we are joined by Andrea Sullivan, the Director of Procurement and Contracts, and I'm guessing, I'm not probably going to pronounce your last name right, Mike Petrie, Network Services Coordinator.
Thank you. Mike Petrie, Network Services Coordinator, IT Department. We'll take one of those instant approvals if we can get it. That was great. Speed things up. It's okay. We'll make it quick. We'll make it quick. The network services, or network equipment bid that you have before you tonight is to allow us to procure network gear, such as router switches, wireless access points, controllers, phones, and our internet filtering, along with the maintenance that goes along with it. The projects that this covers are for our network infrastructure refresh program, as well as our new schools. That's the lion's share of that dollar amount, which is $22.675 million over a three-and-a-half year period. The three-year term is done to, primarily to provide us better pricing when that goes before the vendors. They look at that to make a determination of, you know, that commitment of time, as well as the potential funding that comes along with that. And they can, a lot of times, dig deeper on their price discounts for that purpose. So with that, do you want to cover? Sorry, I ran through that quickly.
Andrea Sullivan, Director of Procurement and Contracts, for the record. Our department worked in consultation with the IT Department and our E-Rate consultant and issued this bid. This is for both E-Rate eligible and non-E-Rate eligible programs. And so, you know, the biggest thing is we had to adhere to all the E-Rate requirements. We issued the bid on December 23rd. We opened on February 12th, received five responsive bids, and we're recommending award to NTT America Solutions as the low bidder, providing the highest discount off manufacturer's list price. And we are happy to answer any questions you have.
Trustee Simon Holland.
Thank you, President Raymond. I'm, that's a big number, and I just want to understand a little bit about how that will be funded. Is that?
So with that, the majority of the funding, as I said, is for the infrastructure refresh program. I think Mr. Mathers discussed that at your board work session last time. And that's now $4.1 million per year. And that allows us to go through a number of schools each year and to refresh their network infrastructure gear over a nine-year refresh cycle. So that's $4.1 million per year. We're also including the new facilities. So Cold Springs Elementary Schools, the Swope Buildout, O'Brien Middle School, Wild Creek, all of those going out through March 30th of 2024 are included in that amount. Beyond that, there are a couple of general fund items. One is for our internet filtering software that we use. That's approximately $200,000 to $250,000 per year. And then we put about $100,000 of just smaller general fund projects into that. And when you take that across that term, it ends up being that amount. But again, the majority of that funding is sourced through the WC1 program.
Thank you for that. It's just a, it's a very serious investment for us, and I just want to make sure that we're all clear that we will have that funding going forward to be able to make this commitment because this is, this is a, let's see, three years, four years, and then two optional one-year renewals. So is there a funding out clause in case we, in any given year, we cannot fund it?
There is, but it's also an estimated amount. These are not committed amounts. All of these projects will come to the board under their own, for the schools and that sort of thing. And then for the infrastructure refresh program, that comes within the annual, what is that? The CIP.
Capital Improvement Program. So, Madam President, I would just suggest that in the motion, whoever makes the motion, that we add the word "in the estimated amount of $22,675,000," just so that we all understand it's.
It's an estimate.
We're not committing that particular amount of money. And I'm glad to know there's a funding out clause.
And when we issue bids, we estimate usage and quantity, but also state very clearly that we're not obligating ourselves to those. And we always have in our bids termination language, so if this, you know, this is a new partner for us, and so if it doesn't work out or they don't hold up their end of the bargain, we certainly can get out of this contract if need be.
I appreciate that. I think it's just good for the public record that, because our public members don't always see the, you know, the details, but if we could have in the record, just say that it's an estimated amount, that would be great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
It's breathtaking.
It is predominantly refresh and new schools. That takes up the most of that. And that is why this one usually is a consent item for us. But with the new capital improvement plan, putting money into the budget for the refresh, it is a bigger number, and that's why we wanted to bring as a presentation.
Trustee Cotto.
Thank you. I have a few questions. So this is only covering new schools, or you got existing schools as a part of this?
There's existing schools as well. There's that $4.1 million annually of that goes to existing school refresh.
And so since we're only talking networking, we're not talking devices?
That's correct.
Okay, because I know that that's a big topic of discussion, is how are we going to fund new devices? And since we're talking new schools as well, that is going to be funded through the capital money, correct? Does that include Swope? Because I know Swope's an addition out of new school, and I know the capital money gets tricky with that.
Swope is a capital project, going on as a capital project, and it'll be capital funds that funds the networking equipment we need for the Swope expansion project.
Okay, so it's capital funds for the expansion in new schools, and then general fund for existing schools, or is it capital across the board?
It's capital across the board.
The general fund is very small. There's some small $100,000-type-a-year projects that go through there, but most of what we'll be spending will be capital money, and we will seek E-Rate reimbursement where we can.
Okay. And then I would assume the capital money is going to be funds that we already have? It's not, is it, or was it included in a bond approval that we have done or will do?
It's part of the capital improvement program that, it comes to you each year, and it's an allocation within that.
Okay.
So it will come for approval each year to the tune of that $4.1 million, I believe.
If you have it, if not, maybe go to get to us at some point, what existing schools this is going to cover outside of the new schools? We heard that. But which existing facilities is this going to impact? Do you know?
We have a schedule, and I can send that.
That would be great, because I think it'd be helpful for us to know which schools are being impacted by this, because then we know which schools are not being impacted, so we can kind of see the future need.
Certainly. I'll get that to JJ so she can distribute.
Great, thank you very much.
Sure.
If I may.
Yes, Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just add to, just to make sure from a point of clarity, capital, remember, the WC1 allows us to do capital for new schools as well as for existing school buildings. And so that's why all of this, the majority of this, because it's being applied towards school buildings, can come from that.
because it's being applied towards school buildings, can come from that project. It isn't something that should be funded anywhere else. So it's still in line with the spirit and the letter of WC1.
Any other questions? Scott?
No, no questions.
Okay. Public comment?
John Appolito.
Hi, my name is John Appolito. I noticed on the bids for this, I noticed the NTT, the one that the district went with, seems to be the lowest-priced vendor that was of the five that were considered, at least according to the document that the district put out in the packet. That's fine if they're really going to protect our kids and their data. Because last week, the Education Weekly published this article titled, "Cyber Attacks on Schools Tripled in 2019 Reports Find." And the schools that are most likely to be attacked are densely populated areas like suburbs and cities. So it's only a one-page article. Hopefully, you guys will read that. So my concern would be, and I'm sure it's not, hopefully, it's not valid, that we just went with the cheapest vendor, whether they're going to protect our kids or not. And we already know that we've had at least three student data breaches, not by the district, but by third-party vendors. And I know the district had to tell parents about two of them because of our other bill, SB 403. But I also know Ms. Martini was talking about Edmodo. That was the first breach that we learned of from one of the free data vendors. And then another year went by, and the company was sold to the Chinese. Then another year went by before the district finally said, "Teachers can't use it anymore." So again, to me, it all gets back to, what are we doing to protect the kids? And I don't know if the cheapest vendor is the one that's going to protect the kids. Maybe they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll be looking for a...
Well, I was just going to offer staff the opportunity to talk about that. This is equipment. It's not a...
This is hardware. So, and it's Cisco hardware. So they're, I mean, from a, from the perspective of a vendor, they are probably one of the leading network equipment vendors out there. They stay, to my knowledge, as on top of cyber threats and that type of thing as any of them. So I'm very comfortable with them. We have used Cisco as a vendor in the district for 18 years, I believe. And
Thank you.
Okay.
We've done well by them.
Well, then I'll make a motion. President, I move the board trustees approves the word of bid number 14-23-01-20. Information technology networking equipment to NTT America Solutions in the estimated amount of $22,675,000 for the initial term beginning October 1, 2020, and ending on March 30th, 2024, with two optional one-year renewals.
Okay. Motion by trustee Simon Holland, a second by Vice President Taylor. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item 5.01, Board Reports. I will start with our student representative, Mr. Nathan Noble.
Well, thank you, President Raymond. So the Student Advisory Board and other student groups throughout the district are doing some wonderful work, reaching out to the community and tackling some of the main issues concerning student populations in our district. The fight for increased traffic safety is a continuing project that we are doing our best to address. And we are also working on some other new exciting projects. And on a personal note, I am now looking for my replacement, as I will, fingers crossed, be graduating in June.
Well, I have begun my spring musical visitations and have already been to one at Reed that was fabulous, and am anticipating the others to follow. It's exciting.
I, let's see, I had a great time reading. I went to read to a second grade class yesterday at Damonte, which is, I mean, at Glenn Duncan. No, not at, no, not second grade at Damonte. And that was at Glenn Duncan. And also, but I did visit Damonte, just to go and support those families out there on the, on the second day on that Friday. It was a great community show. Got a chance, D'Arbel came out. Yeah, I mean, it was just great to see the, and the students really seemed to appreciate it, which was fantastic, just to, you know, just to show that, you know, we're standing with you. Then we have the virtual budget forum that we had. And actually, we had some pretty good questions. Some were ours, and, you know, some were generated. So that was okay. Still good information. And of course, most of us, I think all of us, attended the Bright Star Awards, which was good as well. And I think that covered, it covered me until then. Yeah, covered me until then. So, thank you.
Well, I will do a proper report, since it's only 5:30. And got to go way back to, two weeks ago, attended the Honor Band Concert at Pioneer with trustee Minetto, which was my first, I've been to the Honor Choir, but not the Honor Band. And that was so cool. They did such a great job. And the sixth graders was this massive group of kids. And they sounded amazing. I was super impressed. Because to me, like, that's the first year you kind of get the instrument. And to be up on that stage and doing that in front of a big audience is pretty cool. The Building Strength and Voices Conference for the Student Voice with the elementary school kids, with trustee Minetto and trustee Simon Holland, and our silly headgear that we got to wear, representing our animal spirits. That was a great event. And just so impressed with the work that the staff did to facilitate these sixth graders, primarily working in groups of kids they'd never met before, and really like, kind of just at ease with each other. It was very, very impressive. And then the virtual budget forum was great. Got to see a little bit, didn't get to stay for the end of the Academic Olympics. Congratulations to our student representative, Nathan Noble, who was in the finals. I know trustee Simon Holland was there, and she got to see a little more than I did. So I'll let her share the exciting news. And then, let's see, looking at my list. Also did some reading in some schools. Bright Stars was amazing. Attended the Avid Classroom Program, I know with many reviews. Showcase at Lincoln Park, which was just amazing to see Avid in elementary school classrooms. The way that they integrated it with Benchmark and with other curricular elements. And the kids were just so impressive. The panel that they did at the end, there was one second grader who was just like killing it with her answers. The, I thought that the Swope Expansion Meeting last week, trustee Simon Holland was also there, went really well. And just was a great opportunity to inform the public about some of the, what the actual work's going to look like. And then on Friday morning, had the opportunity to welcome the Nevada School Counselors Group that was here for a two-day conference. And I think a highlight for me for that was that the Damonte Ranch counselors were actually there. And took, I mean, must have been hard for them to leave and to go to that. But to, to see the support in the room for them. I think they've got multiple standing ovations, and people were crying and thanking them. And it was just really impressive to see the, the kind of outreach to that group of counselors after the year that they've had. So that wraps it up for me.
Trustee Cato.
Thank you. Visited a number of schools. It was nice, it was cool to see desert skies in action, just to see how the kids are adapting to that new building and the new spaces that they have. Also went to Bennett, and the students had me sign a pledge to be a good human being. At least that they told me it was for. So hopefully, that's what it is. So I signed it. So hopefully, hopefully, that's what it was. Yeah, yes. So I enjoyed that. And then I'm going to also do a few schools this Friday to read. And I was told the expectations are very high. So I took the day off, get ready. So things are going well. I know everyone's getting ready and excited for spring break. So we can kind of take a two weeks, regroup, and get ready to go. Graduation coming.
Okay, Madam President and colleagues. You've heard about some of the things I've been doing. Went to the Avid, which was just awesome, with colleagues. Attended the Galena Orchestra Zone Concert, which is just, it's just magnificent to see the elementary, middle, and high school students all playing together. It's just extraordinary. I had the opportunity to do a couple of presentations about the school district to the seroptimists of Truckee Meadows and the Reno Rotary. And bless you. And just really appreciate the opportunity to tell our story to folks who are movers and shakers in the community, and to have them be so impressed when they hear the other side of all the great work that's being done here. Swope Expansion Meeting was excellent. Our staff did a wonderful job. Just, just very impressive. Visited Incline Elementary and have been to the Geronty CPA inspections at Incline Galena. And then this morning with President Raymond at Reno. And those are always, it's just so impressive to see those young people and how articulate and self-assured and poised they are. They're just, they're amazing. Academic Olympics. As student trustee Noble said, he could tell, I was trying not to spit the answers out on someone. Oh, oh, just so hard. But those kids are so smart. And actually, we were talking with James Garo about it. And he said, "Well, what subject do you have to be tested on?" And it's everything. It's general knowledge about history and popular culture and literature and science and physics, and just amazing. So very impressive, Nathan. And we don't want to neglect to mention that Nathan is the captain of the booster team. So, and with, I love to embarrass you, Nathan. Also attended the Strength and Voices, attended the Reed High School STEM Showcase, which trustee Minetta was also at. And those kids have come up with amazing inventions to solve real-world problems that just very, very impressive. And then I'll be reading this week as well at Grace Warner. So busy, busy, but appreciate all the opportunities to be out there with not only our kids, but also our teachers and our families. So, thank you.
Not as busy as everyone else, but I did attend the Bright Stars in Abbott. And I really was very impressed with that. It was just amazing to see. I mean, I wish as adults, and adults I work with, had a lot of the mentality that these kids had. But I mean, I think it's great that they're learning the skills and how to communicate and how to work together. I think that is just really, that was very impressive. Thank you.
Trustee Kelly, I don't know if you're still there, but do you have anything to add on your schedule?
I am still here, but nope, I don't have anything to add. Thanks for checking though.
No problem.
If I, if I may, Madam President, just to go back. When trustee Simon Holland spoke of presentations, I did a presentation last night for a group of Boy Scouts from our, from our schools. And I, I have a habit when I go, and they were, they were young. They were nine and 10-year-olds. And, and they had, they had one more thing to do to be able to move to actually, they're called Wee-Belows, which I'd never heard of Wee-Belows before. And they had one more thing to do before they could actually get their permission to become real Boy Scouts. Even though they had their shirts on, they had their whole thing, they did the flag thing and so on. And it was to, to spend time with a, with a public official in public service. And a friend of mine's husband is in charge of the troop and yada, yada. So I went out and I stopped and brought some candy on the way. That's my incentive to get some questions, right? And I did have a little page, I had some questions. I was going to ask him to get some interaction. Forgot all about the candy. Had to cut it off. These students were so prepared. And didn't have to influence them, or bribe them, or encourage them to be involved at all. I mean, they asked about, they asked about the nutrition policy, and why can't they have cupcakes? And coronavirus. And I mean, they, I mean, they have some really good, the budget. I mean, these kids, I mean, and one kid was reading his question, and he went back about four or five years, and someone did some research. And I mean, and one kid went back, "When you played basketball at the university..." Like, what? So I mean, they, they were just very, very prepared. It was very impressive. So I gave the candy to the adults, because the kids were done, and they weren't running off. And I said, "Oh, yeah, I had candy." He said, "We'll take it." But I was just really impressed. I mean, such young, young ages. And sometimes, you know, you have to kind of encourage little boys to talk and so on. Like, not at all. They did an amazing job. They did a great job.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Our interim superintendent report.
Absolutely. Well, it's been a busy week here in the Washoe County School District. You know, I've been in my office eating bonbons and and washing soaps. But in all reality, it's been a really busy week. And I want to just thank our leadership team, our student health services, our emergency manager, our special projects administrator, in dealing with all of the reaction to COVID-19. I do want to remind our public to please visit our website, www.washoeschools.net, for the most up-to-date information around COVID-19. And I also want to do a special thank you to all of our teachers and principals who are in the schools and are having to deal with this on a daily basis. We were out at Huff Acre yesterday. Again, I want to thank the leadership team for coming over to Huff Acre. Huge kudos to Principal Leah Anderson and what she, what she did for her teachers and her parents and the students there. And then I was with President Raymond when we spoke at the Nevada Counselors Conference. And it was just really nice. It was almost like this reverse standing ovation for the counselors at Damonte Ranch. And there were, must have been about 300 people in that room that just stood up and sent their love their way. Attended the state superintendent's meeting last week, where we worked and developed in a workshop format our invest document that will be shared with other boards across the state. And we're doing a very simple platform this time. And it's really around state education funding. And we're going to be solely focused around that issue. Was able to visit Booth Elementary for Reading Week, which was super cool. I met a young man by the name of John Lennon. And so I read to John Lennon and his family, so, which was really great. And visited Taylor Elementary with Principal Ostel. And we will be at Stead this week, reading. And I know the governor's extremely busy, but I'm hoping that he will be there at Stead Elementary. Little shout out there. And then also Sherri Skyes is our support professional. And she is the support professional for Washoe County School District. She works in student accounting, not only for the school district, but for the entire state. And of the year, of the year, Sherri Sykes. Had, yes, I mean, she's super cool. And then had a great conversation with Sheriff Balaum today. So this is going to be coming your way, Deputy Brace, and to Chief Trevino. Really exciting work around a public service announcement type of campaign going out for our high schools around the dangers of opiates. And so he is putting that together, but more information to come around that. And then all of our schools across the district are really stepping up and sharing their love and support for Damonte Ranch tomorrow. They are wearing their colors for Damonte Ranch. All the schools are participating in that. And then Friday night, if you don't have anything to do, Friday night at 7:00 PM, I am going, I just need a date, for Don Quixote at Damonte Ranch High School. All right? Got your ticket? All right. Perfect. So that's, that's it.
President, we should also acknowledge Christie Briggs at Reno High School, who was named the National Speech and Debate Teacher of the Year for the whole United States. So, yeah, big, big kudos to her.
Oops, sorry. Next up is future agenda item requests.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just request that we agendize for action a discussion of a resolution supporting increased funding. And we, we have an old one, but it would be good to update it for current players and current coalitions. So if we could bring that, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Public comment? It's all ready. All right, no public comment. Then I will adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, March 31st, in this room. And we do have also another work session that day prior to that meeting for the budget. Yeah, good spring break.